Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:02 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Justice and Fairness, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the great and just accord.
Well, it's the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovado?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank the boys in the back. The boys in the back, Rod Widdell and Alan Leon, who, you know, are getting this down to an art now, on how well they're producing the show that's on Channel 20 that is so highly rated, you know, so, okay. All right, so, that's right, so, who are all probably relatives of ours, so, okay, whatever, but, thank you, because it's going well, and we appreciate that, and I don't know if you all know that Alan is going back into teaching and will be a teacher in our district, so congratulations, Alan. So, next up, we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Earl Dotson Jr., you're up, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. Just very quickly, having done many of these recognitions, I just want to say that very happy and honored to be able to present this one this evening, because of its uniqueness in terms of the act and the heroism, so, very honored to recognize these two young men. Mark Inez Gray and Damari Hart played a critical role June 18th in the rescue of a man from a flooded Schnucks parking lot on Charles Street. As the man's car was being sucked into the rising water, Mark Inez helped stabilize the car so rescuers could work. Later, Mark Inez and Damari helped lift the man to safety. The two cousins are juniors at East High School. They said they were not frightened to risk their own safety. "I love helping people," Mark Inez said. "There is too much negativity in the world. You've got to bring some type of positivity to someone's life." Thank you, Mark Inez and Damari, for doing your part to save a life, and these two young men are here with us this evening. Please join me in recognizing them and congratulating them.
Great job. Thanks for doing the right thing. So impressive. Thank you so much for doing the right thing. Proud of you guys. Great job. No, I don't. Okay, no, yeah. It happens every once in a while. Thank you, guys, for being here. We're so proud of you. Thanks for doing the right thing. So impressive. Thank you so much for doing the right thing. Proud of you guys. Great job. Thank you, guys, for being here. We're so proud of you.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Earl. We do not have any public speakers tonight, so I won't go through the instructions, but I will ask the board members at this time if there are any board member comments. I'm just gonna take the mic.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Just kind of on a personal note, Rockford Public Schools had a wonderful principal and former principal and teacher for the district passed away earlier this year, Phyllis Archambault. She was my kindergarten teacher at Somerdale.
Wow.
So you know how long ago that was, okay. And she was an outstanding elementary school teacher and principal, and she went on to be, I think at the time they called it Chapter One, which was like the Title One stuff, and she won all kinds of state recognitions for an administrator for those who excel by the IASB, and just a wonderful lady, and she lived to 93 years old and just passed away this year, so. I told, I promised her family that I would bring that up at a board meeting, so, there we go.
Very cool.
All right, David.
I realize we just recognized these two young men for the bravery that they exhibited in saving the van from the parking lot at Schnucks, but I don't think it can really be overstated that in the really deep talent pool in Rockford of whatever, athletics, arts, whatever, there is a deep talent pool of heroes, and that these two kids rose to the top of that talent pool can just, that is a really, really impressive thing. Thank you again, guys.
Any other board member comments? All right, if not, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items: the meeting minutes from June 12th and June 9th, which was our strategic planning meeting, the payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request log, contracts under 10,000, and travel, the two bid recommendations, one for the roofing inspection, maintenance, and repairs, and one for towels and aprons, the recurring contract with CEC for school improvement grant services at Kennedy, the addendum to the recurring contract for ROE, which is the Regional Office of Education, kids for grant-funded services, recurring contract for Edgenuity on online services, the plan administrator renewal for Blue Cross, Blue Shield, the plan administrator renewal for Payflex, the Reading Horizons Discovery, the McGuire Woods recurring contract, and the following other consent items, including the permanent operating transfer of $11 million, the monthly investment report for May 2018, the financial results for May of 2018, the fiscal year budget transfer summary, the annual acceptance of the updated Title One plans, the grant acceptance Illinois Department of Human Resources maternity-infant early childhood home visiting grant, the folate text for integrated literacy, the facility rental waiver fee for Swedish-American, the IASB annual membership, the MOU on the bus refer a friend program, the Educational Office Personnel Association tentative agreement, otherwise known as the OPA, EOPA agreement, the prevailing wage resolution, the new school construction change order logs, the RPS managed work change order logs, the workers' compensation settlement agreement for CG and DL, and the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mrs. McCulloch.
Nine A, B, C, F, 10 A, G, I, L, M.
Okay. Mr. Connor, did you have anyone?
I actually had a different one.
Okay.
Nine G.
G, okay. Mr. Escobedo? That was the one, okay. Okay, any others? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of consent items. Sure, after, but I have, I'm gonna get, sure, go ahead, Mrs. McCulloch.
Because now we're voting on the ones we didn't pull, correct?
Right, correct, sure.
So can we comment on that before we vote on the ones? I mean, that's part of...
Yeah, that's true. We got, with that, we have them.
We don't usually, but I'm going to, because I know quite a few principals, and I know how dogged they were the last couple of weeks working on their Title One plans and allocations and what the, and there was just an incredible amount of effort behind that, and so just to put that whole section together, and if you looked at it, you know, each school is represented, and all the work figuring out what their buildings need, and it looked like they're starting to work on, you know, the whole plan to study act, okay, what, where were we, where were we short, what we need, instead of just buying things because we have the money to buy them. So, kudos to all those principals and to administration for getting that together, because I didn't want to pull it, because I'm...
Yeah, no, sure, understand. Very good, okay. So, do we have a motion yet? Okay, so I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
All right, now I'm just gonna ask, do any of these, do you want combined, or they're all separate? Okay, all right, so we'll start with 9A, take a motion and a second to approve the recurring contract with CEC for school improvement grant.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch.
Um, I know Anthony has two, but, okay, so, here's the spot, we've got a grant, but just because we have a grant, and I know it's not the end of the month, I'm hoping we're not sliding two jillion recurring things in here so that we don't have to do this, I mean, because that...
It's the end of the fiscal year.
That's the timing on it, okay. But as we move forward, what we want to see is that something is working, and that's why we're doing a recurring contract. I know we were all kind of blown away by the number of recurring contracts, but we have a plan in place that there's going to be a formula law, there's gonna, we're gonna look at, they've been successful. So my question is, without having an official document to say how successful or not this last year has been with this grant, can we get an update before we vote on it?
Sure, so, some of the metrics that we would like to see, it is, like, the park results are not out yet, and won't be until the end of October. There was a periodic report to the superintendent on MAP data, and we can get those to you. Certainly, the largest part of the CEC work with the faculty at the school has been on professional development, and that's why you have the number of dollars in there. The daily presence is because it's required of the grant. Excuse me, we just had a state monitoring visit. We have not received a written report on that. There were items to work on. Climate and culture, the behavior part is not where anyone wants it to be, so Dr. Jarrett, Dr. Vosburgh and the team met with CEC leadership and are improving that, but in specifics, we can certainly get that for you. We are at the third-year mark of a five-year grant award. I met with David Turvitz today from the Illinois State Board of Ed at the Chicago office, and he noted that SIG projects across the state have had the greatest impact on improving attendance, getting students there, and equipping the staff, but the turnaround models, remember, these schools that qualified were in the lowest performing 5% chronically, at least three years, which is why they're qualified, and it takes three to five years to see substantive improvement.
But you did say we're on year-to-year. And you said attendance was improved. Does our attendance at Kennedy improve? Do we have that same data? You said there were reports on MAP data to the superintendent. If we're doing a recurring contract, I think it's, I would have been nice that a report on that could have been attached to this as well. The, another thing is, is if we're trying to improve at the climate and culture and work with our teachers, what has the teacher turnover been? You know, what, what are we looking at in terms of staff? Because if we're trying to work with staff and then they leave, and then we're starting over again, those, you know, there's a lot of information, I think, and we'll look for that next year, because I am assuming we come back again next year. You know, and I don't want to turn down money and any opportunity that we have to improve, but I would like to say as a board member, and as a taxpayer, that if we're, the money, you know, if we're gonna give money to special programs from our, that's a state one, right, so, that, that is being, that we're being successful with it. Has our attendance gone up at Kennedy?
Yes, and they have, for each of the years of the grant compared first semester to second semester, and first semester over the year prior, second semester over the year prior. So, I think David Oster with CEC made a great line when we were in the application process. There's a reason why they qualified, and looking at data was certainly not something that they did, and if you go into the upstairs room on the left, in the center wing, you're going to see a wall full of data that the faculty is looking at, and I think they are far more in line with our expectations on PLCs and data-driven decision-making now.
But that's a district-wide initiative as well, so you're, you know, you're layering that on top of there. We would expect to see it. And the park data, yeah, it's not out yet, but you do have the MAP scores, like you said, so, let's see the floor. I know that Mr. Dixon had a question.
Mr. Dixon?
Basically, mine was pretty much aligned with yours. It was, what is the parameters that we use to gauge success? And then what is success? Is it 50% increase in reading? Does it 10% increase in math? And so that's pretty much where I was coming from. What is success?
So, the grant program calls for a 5% increase in year in the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding state standards as measured by the state test. Our, one of the difficulties in it was that this round of school improvement grant recipients received it on 2011, 2014 data, which then the state assessment was the ISAT. We're now giving the park, so it is not an apples-to-apples comparison by any means, and so they wrote a goal based on an old test, and are navigating now on the new park. We also migrated from the Discovery Ed assessment, which was our universal screener as a district, to the MAP given by NWEA, and so I don't have academic achievement data that I can say apples-to-apples. What I can say is that the school is being very mindful of A, B, and C testing periods in MAP and seeking remedies. They noticed certain grade levels did really well in growth. Some did not. We, and so then they refined their plans. One of the initiatives, the strategy that the school embarked on was rewriting their schedule to have an MTSS day on Wednesdays, which called for rescheduling the entire building. Behavior is better that day, attendance by both students and faculty is better that day. We have not yet been able to pinpoint academic achievement results based on that strategy.
Okay.
That launched in January.
Okay, thank you. Well, coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 9A then?
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve item 9B, which is the addendum to the recurring contract with ROE Kids for Grant Funded Services.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch. I was gonna tell you, Dr. Vos, don't go, don't sit down.
Yeah, just hanging there.
Okay, you're up next.
So the initial contract was from January till June of 18. So we're extending that now through the year? I'm trying, I'm...
Until March 31. The grant parameters extended it to the end of March. Jen Maisick has been working with focus groups on just what SEL and trauma-informed coaching work that they would like, and so rather than spending money just because we had it in an ill-advised way, we asked the state for an extension till the end of March. They granted that, and so Jen and her team will start actually rolling things out this summer with the ROE. So all of the parameters surrounding the dollars, the services, et cetera, remain the same, just the end date.
So we have the same amount of money. Have we used any of that $142,000 up till now? Because it's been in play since January, but...
$9,500.
Okay, um, and they were just getting ready to figure out, so there's nothing, there's nothing really to report back if this is all in SEL. So what will they be able to report back on how successful they were with this?
So you'll certainly see a log of number of trauma-informed trainers that have been certified. We haven't had them in large numbers. We will have that. You will be able to see schools' plans in the priority schools. They're going to have newly refined data reports or data strategies that you can have, and then there will be a professional development and SEL, social-emotional learning plans that teachers are going to incorporate into their classroom practice.
I don't understand data strategies.
So, part of what the district did a few years ago with Smart Learning Systems from Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, was a very broad smart learning systems approach, and in that they had one GAN for this school. Well, you know, in six grade levels, K through 5, it's hard to come up with just one, and if you're really going to improve the trajectory of student achievement, you need to look at what your kindergarten needs, needs, so on and so forth. And so the work that Susan Fumo has been doing with schools on smart in the classroom is refining that very global GAN to your grade level?
That stands for greatest area.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Into the classroom and the PLC level. The ROE is working with those priority schools because they need more, because they were further behind in implementing that broad to more specific into a very refined approach, that they can say, we are going to do these over these two-to-four-to-six-week cycles, and have student assessments based on that.
So you talked about Jen Maisick a couple of times, and it was written in here as well. I didn't, that's the first time I've heard Susan, because I knew that she was doing smart, so, um, so how much is this focused on SED, because that's what Jen Maisick's...
Actually, Jen is not special education at all.
MTSS, that's right, okay.
Multi-teacher system of support.
So that's totally in line, then I get it. I mixed the two Jens up, Lawrence and Maisick. My apologies. So that was my mistake. All right, so, this won't have to come back to us again, or will we, will we reapply, or is this a contract or a grant you can reapply for?
The state funded it for two years. They had not previously funded it for several years prior, and so, maybe.
You'll just see...
Figure out Springfield budget.
Right, 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 okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any of the lights on, so I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 9B, the addendum to the recurring contract for ROE Kids for Grant Funded Services.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovado?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, now I'll take a motion and a second for the item 9C, the recurring contract with Edgenuity for online services.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
Same line, so, our metrics that we have on this one supporting the expansion, now we have all middle schools and all elementary. Did we have it in all those schools last year, or this is an expansion?
It is the same number of licenses. We purchased this license originally as our summer program license, and the total cost was very comparable... was very comparable to buying seat licenses per student. It was a much better value. And if you remember, our then CAO, Richard Schroeder, um, wanted to migrate this, make it available to all students, and so we embarked on that contract. We have, uh, an agreement coming from the company, Edgenuity, to perform research with us. We have to enter into an agreement that will data share between NWEA, our MAP provider, our data, and Edgenuity's. We're going to compare students who were involved in the platform last summer with students who are involved with platform this summer. Uh, the summer program hasn't ended yet. That'll be July 11, so I can't give you that data. It will also track students by bands of involvement. So like, on the middle school component, we know that there are 12 students, I don't know which 12, but 12 students at RISA who regularly get online between 5:00 and 6:00 PM on a weeknight. What has their change in MAP been over time? If we had a student who used it according to the implementation plan, 90 minutes minimum per week, what was the result? So we will, depending on what general counsel says, if I need to bring that agreement to board or not. If we don't, we should have that sometime this fall. I saw a report that Edgenuity contracted to do at their expense with Cleveland Metropolitan School District, which in many ways is not remarkably different than ours. And, uh, they were able to take it down to learning objectives. For example, in eighth grade, they do not have algebra in their curriculum. And so they had schools not on the Edgenuity platform, they use MAP. They had students on the Edgenuity platform, and they were able to compare the results prior to Edgenuity and then with it, and demonstrated that even in the items, those pre-algebra lessons that were included in the Edgenuity platform but not Cleveland Metro's, um, curriculum, that students marked an increase in their MAP scores. So that's the level of rigor that we want to be able to provide.
And so to under, to make sure we know what we're voting on, we're voting on a contract so that all the schools that were listed on that contract was, which was all the elementary and all the middle schools, was it not? Were there any left off?
Uh, the Marshals.
Just, okay. Um, all those students are able to use this platform and access, is it our curriculum or our, or is it all their information that, um, because the students can go on and study and, you know, but I, I'm not sure how it's interfacing with our curriculum.
Great question. It interfaces through, I mean, the broad stroke of Illinois Common Core standards. Then you have learning objectives underneath that. The NWEA MAP gives a learning path for each student, if you will, in Edgenuity. A teacher is able to refine that learning path for students. Once they master through, um, course-embedded lessons, it changes. So every time that we give the MAP, those scores that RIT score gets loaded into Edgenuity's platform, and it redesigns the learning path for the student.
And to understand that, obviously during the summer, it wasn't used during school hours, is this to be, and now we're having it for the school year, correct?
It'll, we will have it available, 24/7 access.
Right.
We have also let our partners in 21st Century Programming utilize it. We've provided training for them to help broaden access for students when they may not have a computer at home. Um, but during the day, yes. I think Ms. Detman, um, has provided, uh, some guidance to the school. K2 ought to focus on supplementing, uh, using supplemental time, not teacher-led time, with Reading Horizons and then Edgenuity for third through eighth grade.
So, and, and here's why I'm asking the question. If we're going to pay for this, how many kids are actually using it? Okay, you can tell that 12, you can tell how many students are using it.
Yes.
But unless I, I, my perception, unless, um, principals and teachers are really aware of it and presenting it in their room, and then the kids want to continue it on, I mean, if you just tell them about something, there, most students, there, there's, there's some aren't just going to go explore that on their own. And we also have the, um, technology question with, you know, what they have at home. So I think, I don't have any problem with the whole idea, but our, yeah, how, are, are we getting, it's not our money's worth, but our students getting what they can out of it because we're offering this additional?
My understanding is the way it will work is that when you look at a student's fall to winter to spring MAP test, when they get that fall test, there, you can imagine there will be areas of, of weakness that, that each individual student has on the learning, the Common Core learning standards in that area. What Edgenuity provides is a tool where instead of a teacher saying, wow, you're, in order to hit your growth target, you need to focus on that skill and that skill, and having the student have to figure it out on, basically on their own, or have the teacher generate individual things, Edgenuity allows a learning pathway to be very efficiently developed. So I think as we continue to focus on short-cycle goals, if used properly, Edgenuity has a really good, uh, potential application in giving tangible opportunities for students to practice in areas they need to grow in a way that is much easier for the teacher to facilitate because the teacher would not have to build those lessons from scratch or curate them from the web. Is that a fair depiction, Dr. Wolf?
Yes, thank you.
So over the six months, or the summer period that we had it, that was last year? We haven't had it throughout the full year this year? We just had it over the summer last year?
No, students did have access to it. We saw some schools use it more than others, some grade levels more than others. We had some after-school programming.
How many students used it? Do we have a number?
I have a number, not with me. Uh, thousands. True, I can get you that report, but I'm going to tell you that some of them, it was as little as 20 minutes, and some, it was days of usage, which is partly why we want this work done by Edgenuity.
In faculty visits, one of the things that came up, I, most faculty that I talked to that brought this product up tended to like the product and how it could function, but particularly at the lower grade levels, there were some challenges with, uh, logging on and off, particularly for younger students. So there's some troubleshooting that we're going to have to do to scale it up to, to full usage. Uh, I think it so far has worked more effectively during the summertime in some areas, and some schools have used it more than others, but I think we're really looking to troubleshoot that. The idea of being able to send a student off to a targeted work plan in an area they want to increase growth is a really powerful application, because then there's a direct connection between the, the MAP growth and the extra work that a student would do.
Totally agree, but you have to have the adults making that engagement happen. And so that's why I ask, and it, and the last question is, what is it, 338.9 or something like that? Is that the same we paid for last year?
It's a slight increase because last year, we had some schools that had contracts, and so we rolled it all up into one. So what you saw on board was a lower amount, um, but the site per license and the fees are consistent.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, um, one quick question and then a comment. So I guess a comment is, um, you know, for recurring, this is in general, not just for this country, but whenever we got recurring items, I think it'd be helpful if we get a little more detail sometimes. Uh, I know it's a recurring, but just getting more details would be helpful. This is general.
So what we committed to in the new, uh, in the new planning cycle starting in August is that you will see, uh, a Plan Do Study Act form that will be completed with, and we will commit to that at 80% accuracy, per my personal goal, uh, one of five things that I've committed to. And we also will add a very abbreviated slide deck that will guide the board through that. So your executive summary will become the PDSA. We did not commit to that until August. We are still transitioning and building that because we have to arrange our cabinet schedule so that these are being vetted at the department level and cabinet. But starting in August, you will start to see us hit that target for recurring contracts, uh, as well as over $10,000, uh, board items or things that involve more than one department. Um, we are going to, whenever possible, and at least at 80% accuracy, uh, have, have those brought forward to the board in that format. With the three board meeting schedule we have coming up with the committee of the whole and the two meetings, um, you know, that we're, we're going to have to spread these out a little bit over board meetings to make sure that we, um, have a reasonable timeframe to provide the more detailed, uh, presentation. Uh, but that is something we are committed to.
Diagrams, pictures have been enough for this, but you know, for, some of these items always help to remember things.
Yes, there will be, there will actually be a slide deck.
Floor charts, items like that, they'll help remember. And then, uh, so the question I had with this was, um, uh, does this service overlap any other, where does it overlap some of the existing tools and services that we already have? And where does it complement?
Great question. So in calendar year 2017, Title I alone funded 22 separate online services. We are condensing the broad curricular support to one, Edgenuity. There are other supplemental programs that, uh, schools have in their Title I plans, like vocabulary. A very specific, um, program that they're doing, Reading A to Z, Learning A to Z, that provide other, very targeted or specific, but in terms of a broad, um, K through eight platform, this will be the one, the Title I funds.
Edmentum, I think that was only...
High school.
High school and more credit recovery or...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, the coordinator, Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. Um, you spoke about the MAP test. Once we receive the MAP test, get the response, or the answers from the MAP to us, how long will it take for us to implement it into this program so they're able to use it? Will we have to wait till fourth quarter to its implement, or would, would...
We receive, um, the full bank online reports of MAP results 24 hours after the window closes. So most of our MAP windows are between three and four weeks to allow schools to navigate around their technology that's available, holidays, things like that. So they have a three to four-week window. 24 hours after that window closes, all reports are finalized. We get a data upload, and then we upload it to Edgenuity. So normally, I would say 48 hours, not including weekends. The new learning path is there for the student.
So it'll be customized for each student?
Okay.
48 hours, right?
Yes, sir.
Have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 9C, the recurring contract for Edgenuity.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one, um, one absent.
I'll now take a motion in a second to approve 9F, which is the Reading Horizons discovery that Ms. Narrie presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion?
She presented that, and, and I might be having a brain fart here, but, um, we don't have a PDSA on this one yet.
What you received on Reading Horizons, um, it was mentioned pretty frequently in our June board retreat where we alluded to this as one of the possible reasons we experienced, um, some, some strong growth. Uh, but, but again, the reason we are not moving forward with the, with the PDSA yet is we're taking time to, to scale that up. So we do have, um, Ms. Narrie here who can, uh, share her thoughts on implementation during year one.
Well, and you were some numbers in the executive summary, and I just think it's positive, and I think it's a good thing to say out loud.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
Yes. Um, so yeah, what's really exciting about, um, year one, we've just finished year one of implementation of Reading Horizons in all of our K2 classrooms. Um, and after that first year, we saw that kindergarten through second-grade students meeting their growth projections on NWEA MAP increased from 42% last spring, in spring of 2017, to 51% in spring of 2018. And then also in kindergarten and first grade, we reversed the trend of negative growth in our national percentile ranking with a 15-point increase in kindergarten and a 4%, 4-point increase in first grade. And so this agreement is to continue our software support, um, that we use in our K1, 2 classrooms with implementation, and then also another year of our implementation coaching and summer training for new teachers.
And this is phonetics?
Correct.
Okay, just so everybody remembers what Reading Horizon's all about. And the cost, the $476,000, is that similar to what we paid last year?
Well, last year...
When we expanded it, because we...
Last year, our total cost was actually, um, 939,990. So, um, but that included all of the kits and all of that as well. So this includes, um, the software renewal, which the software renewal we will have to pay for every year. Um, that will be recurring, because it is, it's a year-by-year software renewal for Reading Horizons. The, um, coaching that we're paying for this year, this will be our last year of paying for the coaching, because we are building internal capacity with our instructional coaches at elementary. And so we'll have this last year as paying for the coaching, and then it will be part of our system with our instructional coaches doing that in each of their, um, elementary schools.
So do you know which part of that 476,000 is just...
The, um, the, um, software is 240,000.
Okay.
Next year, that will decrease a little bit because of our schools that will be closing.
Oh, sure.
Um, so it, because it's per school.
By school.
It's by site.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. It's, it's, when we find something that's working and helping, it's...
Sure.
Great.
This, this to me is, maybe it's too early, but this has been a great, um, return on academic, you know, academic return on our investment, so.
Okay.
I'll take a role then on the approval of the Reading Horizon Discovery 9F.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
And I'll take a motion in a second for item 9G, which is the McGuire Woods Recurring Contract.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion?
Um, yeah. Mr. Escobedo? Oh. You brought it up. Um, yeah, what, I guess, um, a general question is, when recurring contracts is, um, like to see the guidelines for what, what constitutes what qualifies as a recurring contract. So for example, there was a pretty good example here with, uh, um, Reading Horizons where you got licenses and so forth, that we've signed up for a program and, but yeah, we have mainline speed. That's a good, I guess, maybe a good example of recurring contract. But items like this where, um, it's, it's, I guess it's not clear to me. It'd be nice to have some guidance, um, and to review those with the breadth as far as what qualifies as a...
I can have Mr. Luster, uh, jump in if I'm missing anything, but I think the reason we saw this as a recurring contract, I believe this is the seventh consecutive year that we've had this at the exact same dollar amount. And, uh, we, on an annual basis, uh, evaluate, uh, whether or not it's a good investment. In this case, um, I actually laid out in our background analysis, three different options that I considered as an alternative. One option I considered was to do nothing. In the state we are in, um, and it, that did not seem like that would be a wise strategy at 61% funding adequacy and with some of the, the policy risks that we, we face, uh, moving forward. Uh, another was to focus more of my time and, uh, and really have me serve as the primary lobbyist, um, and direct in that effort. I felt like, uh, there were some limitations in expertise, time, and effort, and the, the cost of the service seemed like a better value. And then option one would be to focus almost exclusively on using other statewide organizations we're a part of. Uh, that's probably the most appealing alternative option, but the problem we run in there is in many cases, while we have some complementary interests, we often have interests that are not aligned when it comes to things like how funding is allocated with statewide organizations. So, um, we, we have seen some positive movement from the state on education funding policy, both in the area of Title I, which is about a $2 million impact, and with the balanced funding, uh, which, some of which was counteracted by negative changes in the CPPRT, Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax. Uh, but overall, moving to the evidence-based funding formula, um, I feel like our lobbying team, along with our local legislators, uh, as well as statewide efforts, all helped contribute to that, uh, being in place for both the last two years. Uh, we, we have to worry about things like mandated categoricals being funded on time, all of which we're, we're able to monitor. So ultimately, when, uh, as the purveyor of this contract, when I weighed, um, the other strategies in conjunction, uh, in, in contrast with this current strategy, I felt like this was the best value.
Budget source, uh, 10-501 is...
I believe this runs through the board's budget.
Just want to remind folks, okay? Then, so I'll, I guess I'll go ahead and say my reasoning for why I'm not going to be able to support this. My take on things is that it's great that I think we've been able to achieve so much with just the district alone, but my take is that we need to start working, partnering with other districts on certain issues. So if there's issues that are, I mean, there's certain issues that are specific to RPS 205, but most of those are common also, say, for example, other districts like Elgin or issues like that, we should be partnering and not only getting a better return on money, but getting more buy-in and better leverage. Other items that are more local, we could partner with Elbe or other districts. So that's my, I guess my reason why I will not be able to support this. I just think that it's time that we work more. There's, again, there's, just like you mentioned, there's just, the state that we're in, especially in the state that we're in, we need to start partnering with others to achieve change in policy.
Mrs. McCulloch?
I support that concept, but I think that it is politics, it's connections, it's conversations, it's being able to bring our message down to, and so just partnering with other districts, I mean, who are you going to pay to do that part to get it to the state government? Where the changes that we were looking for, for how many years did we look for that title? You know, the Title I, paying taxes on the teacher's salary, some of those pieces. I mean, it took me a few years to really even, I don't like the idea, I don't even like the idea of lobbyists. The word is kind of a dirty word to me, but it is the reality of politics. And if, especially with the problems that we're having with getting our funding, I don't know, I want us out there, I want us thinking, I want somebody out there thinking about us and pleading our case to the people that might listen. And so for that reason, I'm going to support it, but I'd also love to see, you know, the crossover to those connections. My understanding is some of that comes from like LUDA, some of the leadership groups. So maybe Dr. Jarrett can speak to that, other ways that we work with other districts.
Well, and having our own lobbying firm representing the interests of Rockford Public Schools is never a solo endeavor. So, for example, the Title I policy change, which frees up about $2 million a year for low-income students that was previously going to pay for statewide pensions, was something we not, that through the organizational skills, we put a statewide coalition together, we built local advocacy, but we also were able to use the efficiency of our lobbying group as well as other statewide agencies like Advance Illinois, our local paper popularized and brought clarity to the issue as well. So these are always statewide endeavors. What this allows us to do is operate both in and outside of our region to put winning coalitions together. I can't think of a time where we've gotten anything passed that was just in the interest of Rockford. It's always been finding that correct coalition. So I certainly understand choosing not to support and spend the money, but that is exactly what they do, is help us put together either regional or statewide coalitions, which often are difficult to put together without some help in Springfield.
Mr. Connor?
So the reason I pulled this was to make sure we had a little discussion. This is one of the questions I get by constituents, which is, it's not in the grand scheme of things, every dollar counts, but it's not a huge amount. I think the approach that I use when answering constituents is that there's many positives that we've gotten out of this that have been enumerated, but there's also an aspect of, if I'll call it playing defense, which I think Mrs. McCulloch might have been alluding to, is that going down and making sure that there's a personal connection. And I think to that end, one of the things that I like that was stated in this year's motion was to have a commitment, if possible, by board members to go down there in person. And the second thing I wanted to say as part of pulling this is that I personally committed to going down there myself, taking a day off, and meeting with legislators. And the feedback I got was that us going down in person makes a difference when, you know, when it comes to dealing with the legislators. And I think the third thing that I'd say is, and I recognize that the term lobbyist and all the bad things associated with it, but you have to say at the very least, that it is a particular skill set, liked or not, and the consistency around most legislation is through lobbyists, that's just a fact. And so I really totally understand the concern, but I would say that it's not just that they've done a good job, and we should have the criteria that states the criteria. I think that is a good point. But I'd also like to say that we, as public advocates, every one of us on the seven, this is something tangible that we can do. And so I really think that, I think Mr. Escobedo brought up some really good points, and I think we are part of the solution on that outreach, and I like the idea. And I think we need to go to other governments to make sure that we are the most effective we can be.
Thank you. Mrs. McCulloch?
I just want to correct that I never thought that they were, I mean, doing things just for Rockford, but I want them to be thinking about Rockford because we have brought forth issues that are of concern, and they, obviously, if we have them as a school district, there are other school districts. So I think the whole idea of a local legislator's working on our behalf is a great idea, but they're not just going to be working on educational, and the lobbyists that we're looking for, working on behalf of our school district, are looking, and the information that they're able to bring back and educate, I mean, part of this is our own professional development. And I appreciate that, knowing what's going on, knowing what's out there, knowing what people are talking about. The last thing is, is that I, you know, we're also going to be voting on the Illinois School Board Association membership tonight. And if I were to have to choose, now this is 78, that's 30 or plus the 850, and this is an I statement, but I think personally that I get more, I feel like we get more bing for our buck from this contract and these lobbyists than we get from the School Board Association at this point in our relationship as a board. You know, if we had a whole bunch of new board members, if we needed a lot of training, if there were other pieces, but I think that I, and the rest of you can speak for yourself, would get more out of this contract. And so I'm better able to support this, for example, than that other, than the other. Sorry.
The coordinator then called the role on the approval of Item 9G, the McGuire Woods Recurring Contract.
Mr. Escobedo?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, one absent.
We're getting there. Next is Item 10A, which is the permanent operating transfer of the $11 million. Can I have a motion in a second?
Moved.
By Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
So I pulled this because in the past, having been on the board quite a while, I remember us doing this transfer periodically. Transportation seems to always have additional funds, but I don't remember doing it recently. So I wanted, I had a question, when was the last time we did it? Or maybe we do it every year and we don't really talk about it. But secondly, to have a little bit of conversation about why do we have a $14 million access in transportation? I mean, and yet, we know operations isn't funded from the same way, and so just to have a little bit of insight as to the working of all those.
Mrs. Yar?
Sure. First off, the tax levy is limited in the Operations Maintenance Fund, and it is not limited in the Transportation Fund, so that is why we have a deficit. The last time we did a transfer, or last time we did a transfer from the Transportation Fund to Operations and Maintenance was in 2015. Probably should have really done it last year, but with the transition of Financial Services Leadership, we did not do it. And the deficit fund balance has been there since 2015. So it's just time to do it and clean that up. When we have a deficit fund balance in a fund, what we're really saying is another fund is supporting it. So we are just making this transparent, we're cleaning up, doing some year-end cleanup work, because this is the last board meeting of the year, getting ready for the financial statement presentation. So it really has nothing to do with the budget. I know there's some correlation with that, but it really has nothing to do with that.
Right, and I understand that, but when you say that about the tax levy, let's be clear that we didn't increase the levy for-
That's correct.
Yes, it's a flat tax levy. I don't want people to think that we could increase transportation so that we can pay for operations. It's just that, it's just how the numbers have been balanced.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the permanent operating transfer of $11 million, which is Item 10A.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
And I'll take a motion in a second for Item 10G, which is the Follett Text for Integrated Literacy.
So moved.
Connor moves.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
So when this came to Ed Committee and you had numbers, and we all voted on it, and now we didn't have, we didn't buy enough, it appears, so what happened?
So what happened was, we had two sections that were actually missing. And so one was for third-grade mentor texts. We had purchased third-grade materials from Follett last school year from grant funding, and so we thought we had everything we needed, but this was an oversight and we need mentor texts for third grade. The second part of this purchase is our Follett text for our special education classrooms. We had those numbers, we had that order ready, but it wasn't included in the original. So we had the numbers, and so we're including it now because we need to purchase those texts.
And would you expound on what the mentor texts are?
So for every essential learning outcome in our curriculum, every classroom gets a mentor text, five informational texts, and five literature texts for that essential learning outcome. So the mentor texts are what we're purchasing for third-grade classrooms. We purchased the other texts already, that was a previous order.
And then the other question I would have, and this is more of a legal question, is why does this come in on other consent as compared to an action item?
So when I spoke with legal, they said that since we already had the contract approved, it's just an additional order for the, on the original approval. So they said we could do an addendum as an other consent item. And so that's why there is an addendum attached.
Okay. Any others? The coordinator then called the role. Oh, Mr. Connor?
So you said something that caught my ear, which was that this was missed, so I guess the question I'd ask is, what part of the review process might have missed this?
So it, we included, like I said, we received quotes for, the special education, when we had the quote for, we had the numbers, and it was accidentally left off of the original proposal. The third-grade mentor text, that it was an oversight as well, but it was, we didn't have the quote for that at the time. So it was one that we should have realized we needed.
Yeah, I don't think, I didn't make myself clear on that, sorry. You answered quite rightly, but that wasn't the real question. The real question is, when you have budget items, typically you have a process you follow. You say, hey, what's it going to cost me for Program A, Program B, Program C, and you look at the line items. So I would think that's a standard financial process that we go through. And that was more the tenor of my question, is do we have a standard financial review on every program that makes sure that all the elements are in effect there so that we don't have this situation? Because it's human nature that you're going to forget something. So that's why we have process, at least in my view. So that's, maybe it's a financial question, maybe it's a process question, but that's really what, and if you don't have an answer tonight, what I'll say is, don't go searching for it, but I'd like this to be answered as, you know, especially educational programs, I heard a lot of Mrs. McCulloch's questions tonight, and I think one of the suggestions, and maybe with the Plan Do Study Act, that will tend to straighten some of this out, but I think there is almost like a standard format that if that's going to be the answer, then that's fine, and then we'll see that and make sure that that's adequate. But I would ask that at least we address the systemic part of this, because it's not the individual piece, it's the systemic part.
And it wasn't. Mr. Connor, to your point, it was an error. I just received a text from Mrs. Detman, and she's watching, she's away at a conference, but, you know-
Hi, Heidi.
See, there's one person watching.
Yes, there you go. Our ratings have doubled.
There you go.
And, but the bottom line is, it was missed, and rather than have teachers go through the school year with an inadequate amount of resources, they caught it, and I think they are very fixed on, as we go through future processes, to make sure that we look at what happened here, to make sure we don't have to circle back like we did this time.
It really, again, I want to be clear, is that I'm much more about the process side. And when I say what was missed, I'm really talking the process. You know, we need this kind of thing, and it does happen, so that's not the issue. But I think it does make you wonder is what other kinds of things were missing, and that's where the process would come in.
Okay. Thank you. The coordinator then called the role on Item 10G, Follett Text for Integrated Literacy.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
That was pretty deep.
I was copying Mike. Mike, yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
And I'll take a motion in a second for the approval of Item 10I, which is the IASB Annual Membership.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion?
So, would you like to speak to, I mean, you guys had a conversation and a little negotiation in where we were and where we are, and why you think it's important?
Both Dr. Jarrett and I did meet with them.
Yes, and so Mr. Scovano and I asked that the IASB restructure their dues. They had a structure that we felt was inequitable. Basically, the larger you are, the more dues you pay, and the category we were in, really the only limit for us was to get all the way up to Chicago, you know, in terms of there really weren't any meaningful limits. I think we would have had to get well over $40,000 before we would have hit any kind of a cap. And every year, either our student population or our budget increases with inflation, that would cost is being passed on. What we asked on behalf of the board, we made it very clear that we were strongly considering leaving the state association. And so we asked for two major concessions. One would be that they consider a different type of funding formula so that we were not disproportionately charged at the levels we are. They reexamined the entire state system because of the work that Rockford did. Other districts did benefit, so this is an example of something that kind of worked collaboratively. I think there are about seven or eight districts that are near our size in that kind of 20,000 to 30,000 range in terms of pupils. And they created a new cap at 30,000, and we would have to grow 10,000 to 15,000 students and tens of millions of dollars to move off this amount. So not only did we negotiate about a $6,500 reduction from what we were scheduled for this year, we should be for the foreseeable future capped at 30,000. Districts across the state that are at lower levels will now start paying a little bit more as well. There was a recognition that we were paying a disproportionate share of, for a statewide group. And so the other thing that they said is, because you're paying extra, we should also give you extra services as well. So they asked us what would be meaningful, we talked to our administration, Ken and I talked about things that we'd used in the past. One thing, we look back on our records, every year, Mrs. Holdley has talked about the value of the press. It allows us to, rather than hire outside counsel to review our policy, or to have Lori spend almost all of her time checking what's happening from a legal review, you're able to purchase for $950 as part of your membership a year, or actually, $850 a year as part of your membership. If you're not a member, you can't purchase press. So there's a double value here. By staying in, we get the opportunity to purchase it, but they are now including that at our level of membership, at that $30,000 level, the larger districts are now getting the press service included. We also are getting one complimentary board training session. So altogether, there's probably, it's hard to put a value on press, but it would be in the- be in the tens of thousands if we chose to walk away from this contract for having Lori and others have to put that together. The actual cash value is $850, but it would cost much more than that for us to, to not have access to those press policies. And then there's a, and, and the real-time savings of about $6,500 from what was proposed for this year, along with the change. So we really felt like they listened. Uh, we feel like there is value being part of a state association, and, uh, we thought this was, uh, we thought this was valuable. So Ken, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think, did we get everything we asked for? No. You know, did we get some? We did, you know, and so I, I give them credit for listening to us. Uh, they brought a whole team of people up here, their outgoing CEO, their incoming CEO, Dean, our, uh, Dr. Langdon, our regional guy, you know, um, and one other gentleman, and they, uh, you know, listened to, concerned, we, we gave them other suggestions, we talked about, um, you know, a certain number of fixed, uh, registrations for the conference was one of the items that we brought up, that kind of stuff, so, um, but I think they heard it, us loud and clear, that the current, um, billing structure was unfair to us and to others, uh, in, in our size group, and that, um, you know, there, there needs, there, there needs to be a limit to that, so. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, just like we've asked, um, when we talk about educational services, um, so at the end of the day, a year from now, two years from now, if we approve this, how do we know that this was worth it? How do we know that this is value-added? What impact will this have brought to educational achievement? And I know it, you know, it, it-
It's a stretch.
Yeah, but-
Sure.
My answer to that question would be, being, uh, if you have an, if you end up having to focus lots of time and resources on policy generation, because you're not plugged into a statewide network, you're duplicating resources and taking away efficiency, so there's a cost avoidance and a focus avoidance issue there. And two, being disengaged and not collaborating statewide, um, is a missed opportunity. I think there are training opportunities for our board, where our board can, can learn from the Illinois School Board Association. I think there are opportunities potentially, uh, if we can continue to see improvements in the quality of the conference, there are opportunities to learn from other board members. Um, we've asked that they focus in the future on aggregating collective bargaining knowledge, and they have taken that into consideration. I just received a call that they are gonna focus on that, so when it comes to strengthening our collective bargaining agreements, we can have the aggregated wisdom of school boards, uh, from across the state instead of kind of starting from scratch, uh, or just focusing on our own experiences. So I think it's about the wisdom of the state and remaining plugged in to that. Uh, we just didn't wanna, uh, I think Mr. Scovano and I both felt that being plugged in wasn't worth it at the price, but with a 20% price reduction and the ability to have the press cost waived, we ultimately feel like it's a good investment for the board.
Yeah, I think there's a training component for board members as well, that they bring a good value to. I know we have not had a lot of, uh, board members participate in the Kishawaki Division Training Sessions. I've probably gone to a handful of them. Uh, one, you know, one was on school safety, one was on student discipline, those kinds of things. So, um, they're held in, in the northern Illinois area, include DeKalbary and things like that, so there is training that, uh, that is provided like quarterly at those division meetings that, that I do go to in some regularity, so. Ms. McCulloch?
Yeah, that's just what I want, more meetings to go to.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Ken.
But if you were a new member on the board-
Well, I'm saying, we're not, we don't, I don't know, unless Anthony's gonna be talking about how he wants to be going a bunch more new meetings, but-
But we still pay. We still pay, right?
What?
We still pay for it.
So we are now able to, as, at this level of membership, we can have our own training come to us of our choice, and that is part of the value as well. So we can do one-
One training.
One training, yes.
And there's a whole series of them, you can be like a master board member, or a, you know, you can work your way up, or, um, so I'm just gonna say, we weren't a member last year, were we?
We have been a member every year with the exception of 2011, 2012, or 2012, 2013.
We voted for it last year?
You did.
I think I voted no, but anyways.
We did. We voted no.
We didn't go to the conference last year, though.
That is correct.
Is that correct? So I think that, um, if we're not a member, we can't go to the conference. That saves us a heck of a lot of money. What does that conference cost us?
It's expensive.
And I'm not sure-
As a member, you don't have to go to the conference, and we don't have to send people to the conference.
No, and I understand that, but I'm-
In fact, I think the only person who went to the conference was me last year for a day because I was presenting, which again, is part of the value of kind of getting our brand out there statewide, um, you know, the fact that we were sharing on some of our labor management stuff, which at the time was fairly ironic, actually, but, uh-
Well, and I'm just gonna say, I went to a lot of those conferences over the years, and not having gone last year, I didn't feel like I missed out on anything, because what we brought home, um, I, I mean-
Shared that.
Yeah, so that, I, I just didn't see a lot of value in that. Um, I think the press packet, I think that is very valuable, but we're basically paying $30,000 for that press piece. Is there any other way, I mean, did you have a conversation with them about just buying that if you're not participatory, or is that kind of a hostage situation that they have you in?
I think that is a hostage situation. That takes three full-time attorneys, uh, that they have on staff to, to aggregate. Uh, we, we are, legislators like to legislate. Uh, there are thousands of policy changes that, that occur each year, and having that automatically updated, uh, is very, very expensive. So I, I think that alone is probably a good reason to do it if you don't buy into any of the other reasons. We see value in being a member of a statewide association.
Well, I'd like to see how well our lobbyists, who seem to be very aware of what's passing and changing down in the legislature, could keep us up to date on some of the, now that we voted to keep them on board, can they help fill that role at, at all? I don't know, um, and, and what loss did we have in the year that we voted not to be a member? And the whole bargaining piece, I just, you know, unless somebody's gonna, um, I don't know that everybody's, I, I just think every community, every district is different. Yes, you can look at other strategies, but we can also talk to other districts what have, having to be a member of a large organization.
Mr. Connor?
Here's what I'd say, it sounds like there's some hesitation on this. I would be in favor of doing it for another year if we were a little clearer on our criteria. I think there's been some good points about, I don't think, and I'm just gonna say this, I mean, it's not, again, when you look at our budget, I mean, it's fairly small, and again, every dollar counts. I think it's more, the question is the value for it, rather than the exact amount. Obviously, kudos to the two of you for, uh, negotiating that price down. I think the, the thing that I'd say is, um, I don't think we have all the answers right now, um, and I think we as the board, if we're going to do something where we've historically been a part of it, um, I'd like to know more about the criteria, and we're not satisfied with that criteria. And I don't think we set that up last year, to be honest, for this year. Um, I think one of the reasons we're talking about it frankly is that we didn't go to the conference, but it doesn't sound like the conference is really the value point. So if I could suggest, I think I'd be in favor of this if we as a board would also commit to what that criteria is, to say, okay, we in a sense gave you a year, did we get the value, and the value equals 1, 2, 3, 4, and we articulate that. So that would be my suggestion on this, and that I would support this if we give, basically, um, a year of not monitoring, but probation for the IASB to say, here are the things we expect, and here's what we received. I'd like to be clear on what our expectations are.
Mr. Escobedo?
I guess I just, you know, I hate to be the naysayer today, but, um, I won't be able to support this. I think, you know, there's duplicacy all over, and, um, my thought would be the opposite. Let's go a year without it.
Yeah, tell me you didn't get it.
Let's go a year without it and see what the value it is, or what value we're missing, and, um, we can always join next year.
The only thing I would ask, if you're gonna vote it down tonight before you do that, is that you let Mrs. Holdley give you, I can just guarantee you that what it will cost in her time and legal fees will exceed $30,000, so that alone is the criteria. Um, I do agree, I'd love to bring, have a training session so that you can put that to the test, uh, but the press alone, I think, is an incredible value. I think the potential will be part of some aggregation on collective bargaining is a potential value as well, so if, I, I'm just telling you that you, you are going to cost the district money if you turn this down on the press alone. So if that's what you wanna do, then that's fine.
Mr. Connor?
The reason I supported this in the past was because I didn't think they were listening to us, but because they listened to us and tried to come up with a more fair structure, that's why Ken and I were, were able to bring this back forward. Otherwise, I would not have brought this forward. Um, but I think it's, I, I think it's a, it's going to end up costing dollars in legal time.
Mr. Luster has a suggestion.
Well, no, not a suggestion, I would just-
Your phone.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, he's got mine. No.
Oh, there it goes. We both tried it. No, just as it relates to the costs associated with constantly updating the district's policies based on changes in, in the state law, which the legislators are always up to, there is a significant value to that press, uh, package that, uh, the IASB provides. I mean, that's why, if you go on any school district's website, so many of the policies look all the same because virtually, uh, most of the school districts in the state rely on that, because the costs associated with monitoring and doing it yourself, uh, probably take up most of whatever the costs of belonging there are. I just, from the legal side, just supporting what Dr. Jarrett was saying.
Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mr. President, I move to amend the motion to essentially table this for a month.
All right, is there a second for that?
Second.
All right.
Are we done, I'm sorry, are we done with comments then, once we table it, or?
Well, you wanna comment?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, 'cause we're discussing here a lot about, um, the, the, I like to address the comment about, um, the time spent, and, um, so what was the total negotiated amount? Reduced?
The, uh, $6,800, something like that.
So I guess, at the same time, you know, I'd like to say, next time we negotiate stuff like this, think about how much time we've spent, uh, trying to negotiate that, the time spent involved in getting that value down, and was it even worth it?
I can just say, it was about an hour for Aaron and I.
Coordination and so forth.
Whenever we'll call, and then, I spent an hour on the phone and an hour there. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to table, um, to table item 10I, and there's a second for it, so we'll take a vote, I guess, on the amendment?
But you need to, he said for a month. He gave a day. You need to give a time limit on table.
I said for a month.
Because we only have one meeting in July.
Yeah, that's fine.
So the first meeting, the first meeting in August, then, yeah.
Okay. Um, I, Mr. President, if it's okay, I'll, um, take my motion and amend it to give a specific date, which is the second week in August. Table it until then.
Okay. The coordinator then call, you wanna add something else?
No.
Okay. The coordinator call a roll on that motion.
Mr. Segal?
Nah, I'd be happy to vote on this tonight.
Well, he amended it. We just, okay. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yep, yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Sure.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, one absent.
Okay, so we will table, table this item until our second meeting, or the second week of August. All right, um, next is the prevailing wage resolution. Uh, can I have a motion and a second for that?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion on item 10L? Ms. McCulloch?
Um, I actually pulled this to find out the impetus behind it, and are we, will it immediately affect our pay? I mean, is everybody already at prevailing wage? Um, so I'm, I'm just-
It's a requirement, oops, sorry. It's a requirement for every government body to adopt the prevailing wage in the county for which it acts, so that all their, it sets the minimum price that contractors can pay in construction jobs and construction-related jobs with the government entity.
We haven't had this before?
Yes, you haven't had it, you've had it every year.
You have to update it.
So you just updated, and did it change this year?
It generally goes up by now, you know, depending upon the rate of inflation and other matters.
There wasn't a number in there, was there? It just says prevailing wage.
It does, but there are charts attached to the motion, if you look at it, Exhibit A.
Okay.
And it's breaks down into different fields based on what the worker does, but it's passed every year.
So instead of just having a generic prevailing wage contract that says we will follow the county's numbers every year, we have to revote every year with new numbers? Um, and are we in line? Do, is this gonna affect anything? Are we gonna have to give anybody raises because of this, or are we, are we within?
No, no, most of them actually make a little more than that. What it's really intended to do is if there's a non-union shop that's applying pursuant to the Public Bid Act, they've gotta bid at a minimum what the cost it is costing for a union employer to pay, so that they don't have an unfair advantage in bidding for construction contracts.
Okay. All righty.
At least that's the intent, I'm not-
Right, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't gonna be a follow-up on this, that they were gonna bring back a bunch of raises to us because we were in line.
No, just as an annual thing.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of 10L, the prevailing wage resolution.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We're almost there. Um, I'll take a motion in a second for the 10M, which is the New School Construction Change Order Logs.
So moved.
Move by Ms. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Ms. McCulloch?
So I pulled this because, where did I see on the log, there was a change order, um, they had to go back and paint the brick for $5,400 at Cherry Valley. Why didn't we buy a brick that matched? I just, I mean, that's just like, really?
I don't know if we have anyone here that can answer that question. We'll ask Dr. Jarrett.
We just spent all that time on $30,000, and here we have just one-
We'll just ask Dr. Jarrett to follow up with the Operations Department on that question and get back to us electronically. Is that all right?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I'm, I'm sure it has to look pretty, but it, but it just seems like one of those things that you would buy the right color brick, I guess, so, that's a tutor for somebody for how long?
Different funds.
All right, uh, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 10M, the New School Construction Change Order Log.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Hey, I get to turn the page. Hey, I get to turn the page. We're now at closed session. I know, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault.
End of year, that's all it is.
It was great discussion. We're now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following items: the appointment of Julie Chandler as a 10-month early childhood administrator, the appointment of Laura Zaremski as a 10-month elementary school assistant principal, appointment of Kim McLaughlin as a 10-month elementary school assistant principal, appointment of Tamara Bellman as a 10-month high school assistant principal, appointment of Spencer Brown as a 10-month high school assistant principal, the appointment of Benjamin Epperson as a 12-month curriculum dean of secondary mathematics, the appointment of Ellen Schubert as a 12-month director of allocation, the appeal open enrollment for 2018, the open enrollment appeal, the salary adjustment for non-bargaining employees, the resolution authorizing notice remedy for Cynthia Jansen, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Expulsion for student 2037 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement through the second trimester of next school year. The student 4198 is expelled for the entire 2018-19 school year, and the 10-day suspension for student 4203 is affirmed, and administration will offer a last chance EIA that will return to the board. And we had one EIA, which was student 3586. Is there a motion in a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Frowning if you do. Please call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items, not.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
I defer my report to Mr. Zetaker from Human Resources. I also do want to draw your attention, as he's getting set up here, there's an attachment that lays out a proposed committee of the whole schedule, and specifically consensus, just having the board take a look that this makes sense to you. The meetings would start at 5:30, go to approximately 8:30, there would be no closed session. We would really focus on, largely on new business and one report being shared. The other two meetings would have recurring contracts and traditional items for the board, but we would, we would almost exclusively use this to vet new items and to do reports is what we landed on with Committee of the Whole. You can see the schedule here. The first one is going to be July 17th. By August 7th, we will have our new protocols in place with the 80% accuracy on the PDSA and slide decks in place.
Thank you. Mr. Zetaker.
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Jarrett for allowing me to take his time to give a high-level overview of the work that we've done up to this point with National Equity Project, and then to give the board a little insight into work that's coming forward this year. The presentation really would be broken down into, like I said, a review of work done, moving forward towards racial equity and the work we're planning, and then just some high-level future dates to make the board aware of. So, in 2017-18, if you remember, the board approved our contract, three-year contract with National Equity Project, and we began working as an equity design team. And we first had to start with the why. And as we approached the equity and discussing this, we really wanted to understand where our equity gaps were and what they are. And not only understanding what the equity gaps are, but how do then we design a response to address those gaps? And so, what we've embarked on in the 2017-18 school year is to try to design some of those responses. Once we kind of addressed and identified some of those gaps and started to design, we wanted to figure out who did we want to have initial rollout and to dive into this work to begin? And so, we identified some locations. We took a look at student and teacher data and to select schools. And as a group, we decided that was also very important to look at a feeder system. Looking at some of our mobility with our students, we see that they move from one building to another, but within the same feeder system. And we also know that as our students move from elementary to middle to high, the advantage of having teachers engage in the same training and the same professional development would be advantageous for our students. We originally started with five buildings. As you can see up on the screen, Ellis, Lewis Lemon, McIntosh, Kennedy, and Auburn. And as we began the work, Dr. Verona at East High reached out to us with the staff's desire and want to be one of the first schools to jump into the equity work. And so, East High will be a school that we work with as well next year. And so, we had to figure out, you know, how are we going to get with these schools and start to determine and design some of those responses? And the slide that is up is just a reminder for the board members that were able to come to the training in December, that we look at both the problem and solution from a six-circle model with National Equity Project, where you look at above the green line as technical solutions or technical problems, and then below the green line as relational. And so, we wanted to take an approach to address both sides of that green line in terms of identifying problems and then creating solutions. So, we decided as a group that we scheduled different listening sessions with administrators from the building and then the separate meetings with the staff. And we were listening, again, for both the structure, pattern, process, technical spot, but as well as the relational pieces of that six-circle model. And we wanted to understand, you know, what were the trusting relationships and levels of those relationships in the building? What is meaningful and important to the staff in terms of their culture and climate? And then, we wanted to build that identity. What was important for that staff identity and what we needed to consider when planning for next year? During those listening sessions, we also wanted to find out what current collaborative structures were working well for staff in the building, and then what kind of strategies or patterns or work were they engaged in or planning to be engaged in in the building where we could link our equity work? Because what we didn't want is for buildings to think as equity as something separate from the work they were doing, but how do we link it together? So, taking those listening sessions with the buildings, we're looking at designing how we're moving forward with our equity work. So, our plan for 2018 is one that is building leadership teams in the six identified buildings, the administration and then a group of teacher leaders or staff leaders. We really want to build self-awareness and shared identity as leaders for equity. We also need to understand individually and institutionally what they need to create racially equity, racial equity both academically and socially, so that we experience success for our marginalized students. And we've developed some structures and processes that we're going to work through next year. We will have cross-school cohort of leadership teams, so they'll have an opportunity to learn with each other and from each other. We will work with the cohort of building administrators to continue further in their development and training, and then we will be going to the buildings for onsite coaching. When we do and work with our leadership teams, we're really looking at core competencies of leader for equity. And those look, as they're on the screen, design leadership, instructional leadership, socio-emotional leadership, and facilitative leadership. It all is around the equity imperative. And what we're trying to build with those leadership teams in those buildings is we're trying to build the knowledge and skills and the capacity of those employees to be able to take new skills and practice them with automaticity. And so, how are we going to do that? How do we know where they are? How do we know the progress they're going to make? The next couple of slides are just an example of assessments that we'll utilize to gauge where we start with our staff, and then how do we progress monitor their growth around those different competencies? And so, we'll utilize those kind of as a pre-assessment, progress monitoring, and a post-assessment, if you will. So, some future dates to update the board. July 26th and 27th, we're bringing building-level administrators, both principals and assistant principals, together for initial training. In a future slide, you will see the type of agenda that we'll have for day one for those administrators. We're currently on August 16th, working to again create a day-long training for community stakeholders, working with Mr. Dodson Jr. and identifying some of those key stakeholders to go through this training and the process. We think it would be advantageous for some of our key community members to understand the work that we're doing with our students and our staff, so that they can support us as we look to grow this work across not only our organization but our community. And then Friday, August 17th, which is the second day of Institute, we will be working with those pilot schools' leadership teams in a day-long work with National Equity Project, where they will be engaged in work and training. We will look at our month-to-month schedule, how we're going to go about working with each individual school in terms of equity. The slide you have here is, again, just a draft agenda that we will be utilizing with our principals and assistant principals on August 26th. Some of these topics are very similar to the ones that we did with the board members and superintendent's cabinet in December, but we're really clear with the purpose for our administrators for this retreat. And we really want to just increase their understanding of the underlying causes of racial disparities and what it means to work towards equity. We want to make sure they understand the impact of bias on educational experiences. And then, we really want them to understand also the dialogue and the relationships that it takes and is necessary to really impact change from within. And then, the last one, again, is just kind of a draft, month by month, how we will work in these, excuse me, these different structures between our different cohorts and our onsite coaching. I think it's really important to remember that each school is going to be at a different spot in terms of the acceptance of this work, where they're at with relationships and trust among each other, their comfortability around conversations. And so, they will all be moving at different pace, and they're going to determine how fast or slow the equity design team and National Equity Project works with them. And so, it's going to be a very fluid process next year with our six schools, but we will be engaged with them, as you can see, monthly in different formats to continue that work around equity. So, I just wanted to give a high-level overview. Again, thank Dr. Jarrett for allowing me to take his time, and any questions from the board at this time?
Ms. McCulloch?
Just, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm just tired, but, so, did you bring all the schools together, these pilot schools that you're calling pilot schools? Everybody came together and had the same conversation? Did you go into each building?
We went into each building. So, we created the same set of questions. We first started with administrators. We wanted to get their perspective separately from administration to staff to see where they had common insights, where they saw different things from their perspective. So, we created a set of questions, and the equity design team broke up into partners, and we went to buildings to do listening to gain that information.
So, were you in a group in the buildings? How did, how did we bring staff together for this?
Yep, they were invited to participate by their administration.
So, it was volitional?
Yep. Some buildings had their whole staff. For instance, Ellis, their whole entire staff. We used a PLC to use it. Kennedy, I believe, had 15 representatives. And then, I can't speak for McIntosh, but I believe they had about eight representatives. So, it was, it was a volunteer in terms of having that discussion and working with us on those questions.
And then, when you co-mingle, it will be representatives from each building? It's not going to be full staff?
Yeah, we're going to start with leadership teams to build their capacity first. We thought that was a better approach than rather taking that whole staff and trying to work it. So, we're taking an approach where first semester specifically, really trying to build that capacity of the leadership teams in each of those buildings to then help facilitate the work as we expand it out to full staff.
So, does that happen during the day, and we have substitutes during that time? Or is this outside, or do we pay people B?
Right, so, we're trying not to do that. We're going to try to use after-school time. We're going to try to utilize some of the built-in time during SIP and Institute days. There will be probably opportunities, very few, that it could be throughout the day, but especially when we're bringing the multiple schools together, that's very difficult to do during the day with the multiple subs. So, we're going to.
But if it's after school, it's stipend time, or is it volitional as well?
Well, we'll try to make it as volitional as possible, but then again, trying to use embedded meeting time where principals with those leadership teams may sacrifice, you know, 45 minutes of a different PLC meeting to work on this, to engage. And so, that's part of the work and working with the principals and how to design the best way to deliver this.
And part of my question is, is this. It's, the people who step up and volunteer recognize that they are, that there's an issue.
Sure.
It's people sitting in the back who aren't volunteering, who are just like, not me?
Yep.
I don't know what. So, that's why I have a problem with it just being a group. I mean, how do you make it pervasive? How do you, you know, spread?
Yeah, yep, and that's the work that we will do.
Build ownership.
National Equity Project, because they've gone through this. And I think to address that point is, is those folks that are volunteering, we need to build up their capacity, because they're going to have interactions every day with the staff members that aren't as excited to join in. And they need to be able to have those conversations and to help build that trust within buildings. And so, that's why we took the small-group approach to start with.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I guess my question is, I'm surprised to see throughout this slides that academic achievement does not, I mean, I know.
Yep.
But where specifically is academic achievement and the urgency for us to get there?
Yep.
Part of this.
Yep, as part of this work, you won't, we won't see immediate academic return on investment with this work. This is complex work. It's around not only relationships and learning to build trust around difficult concepts, but it's also looking at structures of buildings and how we set processes. And so, this is long-term work that will have academic achievement, but it's not something certainly that I could look at the board and tout that we're going to have academic achievement in 1819 basically off this work. We think this is a variable to increase academic achievement, but I wouldn't be able to say this will be the sole, sole responsible for.
And I guess what I was asking is, are there discussions as part of this work to get a sense, a understanding of the sense of urgency that we as a board have relayed in terms of, you know, academic achievement?
Yeah.
As part of this effort?
Sure. And I think a lot of this, though, teachers innately have asked for better training, better professional development. We have mentioned earlier in the board meeting around trauma-informed practices, teaching practices, and this is really linked to that. And so, this is what teachers have asked for in terms of skills to be able to interact with students more effectively. And so, that certainly isn't going to be lost within the teachers. But again, I think our approach to building at the ground level and making sure that we're setting the table for future work is really important as we lay this, this, it's really a sensitive topic out into the schools.
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We do not have any committee reports. So, our first action item now is the resolution to adopt a 2018-19 budget. Is there a motion in a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion or questions? See how good a job you presented? Okay. I'll have the coordinator call a roll on the approval of the 1819 budget.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Our next item, action item, is the special ed, private, and residential placement contracts for Threshold Young Adult Program. Motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of this special ed, private, and residential placement contract.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Next item is the AP Physics Resource Adoption that was presented by Carrie. Is there a motion in a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Coordinator then call the roll on approval of this item.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Next item is the Middle School Social Science Resource Adoption that was also presented last board meeting. Is there a motion in a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to the two of you for being the tag team on.
I know, they're good, aren't they? They're quick. All right, okay.
That's my discretion.
All right. Please call the role on the approval of the middle school sci, social science resource adoption.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on to new business, and we, item 16B was pulled. That was the rental agreement with RBC Extension Center. So, the Canvas Learning Management System. Mr. Zetaker, I believe?
Yes, I will have Mrs. Alt presenting this.
All right.
Just for the review of the board, we've discussed investigating a learning management system to assist our expanded professional development for the sustainability for adult learning. And then, Mrs. Alt will discuss as well how that will filter into the classroom in the future, and so, I will turn it over to Mrs. Alt.
And just background, this did go through the PDSA process, so, there are about four or five items on this agenda that did go through that. We took the lobbying contract through that, and we also took, as a recurring contract example, and we put this contract forward, this proposed contract forward, as an example of new, a new item that we're considering. So, you'll see there is a slide deck, at least a 1.0 version of the slide deck. Obviously, they'll be different from presentation to presentation. So, just for a note of process, I wanted you to know, we did try to get some in that we could vet, and we'll keep getting better and better at it in July, so that when we can really hit the ground running with that 80% target in mind in August.
Thank you. Mrs. Alt, welcome to-
Good evening. Haven't seen you all for a while.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett, for that introduction as well. Yes, we got the opportunity to be the first ones to practice the PDSA and the presentation. So, yes, this slide deck might look a little different than it will in the future, but we're hoping that it will provide you the information that you need this evening around the purchase request. So, as some of you know, I think you were apprised of the new pathway initiative at the last board update, I believe, and so, this slide should be a little familiar to you. This is just talking to you a little bit about and showing you about the trajectory and a concept around professional development for adults in our system, especially teachers, and that's what we're working on right now with teachers and also with principals. And again, just to give them some job-embedded professional development. And so, tonight, we're going to talk to you about the tool that we need in order to make this work. So, what is an LMS or a learning management system? We need a place to track professional development and performance outcomes that can house materials and create an atmosphere where collaboration and job-embedded professional development can occur, so for adult learners. That's really what we're going to talk mostly about tonight. There will be a little bit of a conversation about how this may look in the future in classrooms with teachers and students. We know that LMS is, this is kind of a picture, I'm not going to go into it in depth, but I wanted to show you kind of what a participant would look at for the front screen of an LMS. And what an LMS is supposed to do is it's a digital space that obviously allows any time and anywhere learning for 21st century learners. So, anytime, a person could go in on any other device that they, that they can hook onto an LMS and then start learning about their coursework. So, a perfect opportunity to be much more flexible in our learning for adults. It allows for collaboration with shared documents and instant messaging. They can do emailing, they can have the ability to video things, share video, they have opportunities for conferencing with one another online. They also can, it's a place you can house materials that can be presented in a traditional format with documents, recordings, live video, live videos, discussions, peer reviews, feedback opportunities. It's just a lot of collaboration differentiation for the adult learner. So, how we started the process, pretty simply, you'll see a timeline coming up here shortly, but we started by discussing this in beginning of October. Actually, it was in the transition time that I was moving from schools' leadership side to HR and the professional development side, working with Kim Blanchard, who was the director, knowing that she needed, as an instructional designer, an LMS to take and actually implement the designs for adult learning pathways. So, that's why we started this conversation in October. We tried to get a cross-section of some departments to kind of figure out, hey, are we moving in the right direction? What do you think about what an LMS is? Kind of educate people on what it is. A lot of people didn't have a clue unless you had participated in like a college course or in some other kind of training module that's online. So, here's a brief timeline of the progress. Again, starting in October, finishing at least the first part of this in March. And in that, we had some demos, some information from some companies and vendors, and then the LMS committee kind of decided on a recommendation out of those demos that they looked at. But then, when we took it to Ed Services, Ed Services had some really great questions, and their questions really revolved around, hey, if we choose a vendor like this and we want to commit to a contract, what does that mean for our students if we decide to push this into classrooms? Excellent, excellent question. So, let's talk and pull some teachers into the conversation and see what they think. And so, that's what we started doing. So, the next part of the timeline, you'll see that it talks a little bit about what that teacher committee did and what types of things they looked at. They looked at three different LMSs. They talked about what those, what the interface looked like as the side of a participant and adult learner, but also then getting into what they call a sandbox space and starting to work in the sandbox to see what it would look like if you started creating something, creating learning environments for students. And so, in that, they were given a survey, they completed the survey, which informed then the larger committee to decide on what they recommended and then going ahead through the process. So, what we did is when we wanted to bring it to Teacher Voice, we kind of put out an invitation, recruitment invitation, hey, who was interested? Most of the people, there were, I think, 20, 26 schools representative, 64 teachers that applied to be a part of this committee. Most of them had LMS experience in one shape or another. So, they have either taken courses through an LMS, or they've actually utilized it in other districts that they've come from. So, to make that committee manageable, we kind of solidified it, made it a little smaller. You see a cross-section of the types of positions and the type of levels that we included, special programs, special areas, high school, middle school, elementary, principals, central office people were there. So, just to try to get a good, good cross-section of, of people. So, again, they did, they had some time to research, kind of play in and use the sandbox spaces out of three. One LMS was one that's currently being used at Roosevelt. We did have somebody on the committee from Roosevelt. I don't like to say Schoolology, because I guess that is the wrong way of saying it, but it's Schoology, and Canvas were the three. And those are the three that actually the larger committee had considered as well. So, out of all of that, they got to take a survey, and we'll get into those results in just a moment. In the midst of that process, we also went to some neighboring district, Belvedere, who utilizes Canvas in the classroom, and talked to them about what that implementation looked like, what kinds of things they had to consider, what did it look like from the tech department side, and so on, and, and they really enjoy Canvas. They think there's a, really a good benefit to it, but there are some implementation pieces that we do need to consider once it moves into the classroom that we will, of course, talk to our committees about. So, survey results. As you can see, we did not name the survey, so they were kind of going in kind of blind. And as you can see, LMS3 had excellence on all of those components of considerations around an LMS. And so, we held, I think it was two meetings in between to discuss that survey or the, we had, excuse me, we had a committee that actually met with them prior while they're researching and playing in there, seeing if they had any other questions, and then they took the survey, and then we had another meeting with them to go over the results. And this is what the results were. So, at this point-
Mr. Connor has a question.
Very quick question. What's the significance of the green highlights on the survey results?
Green highlights just means that that was the LMS that was chosen, it was highest What they found in their discussion, not that we have to go through this right now, but mobile applications was one of the most talked-about discussion point, because mobile apps are extremely important right now, so that people can get access or have access to, to systems anywhere, and Canvas had that highest rank at this point. So, they found that their application to their apps were the best. I just remember that was one of the largest talking points. So, why Canvas? The subcommittee also talked about all of these things. It's used by local colleges and universities around, Rockford University, Rock Valley College, and now NIU is considering moving from Blackboard to Canvas. We have local area school districts around us. Harlem is looking at Canvas. Belvedere uses Canvas. Christian Life uses Canvas. We have some private schools around here that also do. They use, Canvas can be integrated well with the types of textbooks that we currently utilize in our curriculum resource areas, and so, that would blend and integrate well. And of course, it's one of the leading LMSs in the industry at this point, and so, they do have a catalog option, which not every, every LMS has, which helps on the professional development side for adult learners, so that it's very clear what the tracking looks like for people.
Mr. Connor.
Couple of quick questions. One is, where is Canvas headquartered, and what is their rough size?
I don't know if I would be able to answer that. Our director would be able to answer that much better at this point. She has done a little bit more research with Canvas, but I'd never asked her that question.
Okay. I think the implication of the question is, what kind of support would we get? And I understand that if you've got volume, meaning that other schools do it, more than likely, the support tends to be better, but it, one of the questions I-
Salt Lake City.
What is it?
Salt Lake City.
Salt Lake City, thank you. Because one of the questions with any provider like this is, is the methods, and I don't want to go off on the weeds on that, but I'd be curious, the, the real question here is, especially for younger companies, you want to know what the percentage of R&amp;D is, as an example, because that is often a leading indicator. How much do they spend on support? What does it take for us as the IT area to support? So, those would be the kind of questions that I'd like to make sure that we address on this one. I think the only other thing is, point number three jumps out to me on this page, adopted textbook providers. I think it'd be very interesting, at least for me, to see how this overlaps with the textbooks that we've already gotten and what implications that would have for us going forward.
And we did some basic research on that, and the teachers did some basic, basic research. We know some of our Project Lead the Way teachers have tried to use the free version of Canvas for the last year or two, so they're very interested in it, and it does work well with some of their curriculum that they have. So, those are all discussions we definitely will have before we consider moving into the classroom, but right now, since most of our focus right now, because of the new contract, teacher contract, and the requirements for getting pathways up and running, it was more about the adult learner's side at this point.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. But moving forward, since we're not necessarily adopting something district-wide for students, this model looks a little different, so the purchase would be more around the professional development side funded through the human resources department, and then we will consider working with that committee long-term in the curriculum department to figure out, what does that look like in classrooms and how will we utilize that tool? So, again, this kind of leads into what this is about, which is really taking a model that's more about early adopters than it is adoption district-wide. And so, this is what it's really important, we, there is a group of teachers that do want to start with an early adoption model in their classrooms and hooking with their grade-level partners, expanding that early adopter list out from the people just on the committee to the people that wanted to be on the committee, and trying to expand out even more. And so, in order to do that, we talked to the company a little bit about what our options are. We know how much it would be for professional development for all staff, but really, what could they do for us so that we could have early adopters in the classroom without having a roll-up model which costs quite a lot of money? And so, Canvas has been very kind in talking to us a little bit about a contract and possible contract and what the cost out would be. They gave us the Luda price, because we're one of part of the large-unit school districts, and so, they have special pricing for those districts as well. And they've really set up a really great, all-inclusive package that includes training, which probably will be minimal on the adult learning side, but maybe significant when we move it into classrooms. So, really nice package deal, all-inclusive. If you à la carte a lot of things, the price goes significantly higher. So, that is what their invoice as of right now looks like. Are there questions?
Any more questions? Mrs. McCullough?
Yeah, I should have just gone in right from the beginning, because I'm just not even, so I-
Help me out, what's a learning management system? Because you went through this whole presentation and how you got the process to decide which one you wanted, but I guess I still don't understand-
It's an online tool. We're going to be able to design courses, classes, and units that we can house electronically, and so that we'll be able to offer different sessions of different courses throughout the year, because most of what we will be able to design can be done remotely. So, it addresses modality learning in terms of teacher time, where they can work on their coursework that we develop on, through our pathways.
So, this is specifically for the adults to develop their, to continue to develop their management potential in our district?
Nope.
No, that's not this one.
It's more about what, like, for instance, for teachers, learning more about-
I mean, I'm getting that from learning management systems, so I'm a little confused.
Right. So, it's just, it's like taking a course that's in college, but you do it all online. And so, there is some face-to-face components that you can do, but we traditionally, in our system right now, have training set up. That's all we have. We don't have anything deeper learning around concepts and skills in learning. So, I can give you an example.
So, this is to, so that they become better teachers?
Yes, they can.
Or is it content-specific?
Correct. Can you put it on slide two, please?
It can be both, to be honest.
I'm so sorry, but I can't be the only one thinking this.
All right, so let me take you, let me take everyone back to slide two. Take a new teacher that starred there, so this was, this was our attempt to explain this. If we want to increase student achievement, which is what this is ultimately about, we have to grow the teachers that we have as adult learners. They do not come to us as fixed products. They don't come to us as, as good as they're going to possibly be as learners. So, how do you grow them, and how do you do that in a way that's efficient and effective? What we have mapped out here on this slide is that there are certain pathways we want teachers to be able to take. In a district, you typically, if you don't build something like this, a learning management system, you're going to exclusively rely on outside colleges to provide graduate credit. That can be good. You can get master's degrees that are positive, but if you want to customize with what your teachers really need, and you want to be able to offer them led by your own people, and you want to be able to keep track of that in lots of different areas, then this is how you can do that, is have a learning management system that stores each individual adult's learning credentials that they're able to accumulate in the system. Eventually, you would do the same thing with students. So, a learning management system is something that allows you to build this, to build a class, but it also allows you to keep score, so that you're not all over the place in terms of knowing what your adults have accomplished. So, if we want to build classes to help people become future principals, we can do that. We show that on the diagram here. If we see we're short in ELL teachers or special program teachers, we can build a special program pathway. If we want all teachers to learn more about teaching in their specific content area, we can keep track of that. So, if we just did, let's, let's attach to something we just did today. Okay, today, we just talked about a $500,000 investment in our early literacy programming, okay? Right now, we're solely allowing an outside vendor to provide that training for us, but what did we hear in our presentation today? We are going to build our capacity through instructional coaches to offer that. We're going to continue to have new teachers that need to learn how to use Reading Horizons. A learning, a learning management system would allow us to create a one-credit course, for example, that every new teacher in our district could take that's going to be teaching elementary reading, that the coach could have the person work on on their own, earn the credit while they're getting their coaching. So, a learning management system can be lots of different things, but at the end of the day, it's the one-stop shop for us to build new courses that we create. This isn't about coordinating with NIU or some of these other providers for the most part. This is about, we can build our own content and save it for adult learners and keep track of it. And that's a big, big deal if we want to start to do this. We gained the ability to have full control over steps, or, excuse me, over lanes in our salary schedule. And if all we're going to do is just send people out to go get graduate credit and not customize it, we'd really be squandering that big opportunity we've gained here. So, the ultimate why here is for us to take charge of our adult learning processes in this district. Once we've done it with- Once we've done it with adults, we're making a really big bet that, you know what adults are going to do? Wow, this was really great to learn in these different modalities and to have this ability to customize. We are very confident that adults are going to want to teach kids using this, and this is much more how students learn. So you can see on slide three, gave you a whole list of ways this could eventually be used. Gamification of learning, the flipped classroom, you know, eventually a teacher could be using this for algebra class and putting their entire algebra course on there and letting a student work at their own pace on those kinds of things. So we're focusing first on the adults, but eventually, we believe as the adults get a taste of this, it's not only going to be good for their development as teachers, but they're going to want to use it for their student learners as well. But it's a two-step process.
But to be clear, and, and, you know, the whole bargaining process that we went through in getting control over that, I understand, the courses that we develop internally will not, I mean, they can affect their step, their lane, but they won't affect their academics on a university level.
That's what I was...
Will they...
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
We are not working with, you just said we're not working... And this slide, the, go back one, the one with the scholar at the top, new teacher, it looks to me like there's this one pathway, and at the end, you get to the scholar point, and you're saying that's not really true, because there's different ways to go.
Yes.
This is a problem for me visually.
This is just a larger conceptual nature that how different pathways could be, could connect to one another in a trajectory of learning.
Yeah, these are all just different steps.
So this is just different steps.
So, we're going to do 10 credit hours for new teachers. Well, gosh, do we want to store all that in one place and keep track of all? Some years, we'll have 100 new teachers. Do we really want to have that all stored all over the place? Do we really want to reinvent those courses every year? No, we want to save those and build on it. Then pathways for teachers. Gosh, we'd really like to build the number of multi-classroom leaders that we have in this district, the number of people who are certified to be teacher mentors. Well, we're going to build those courses and allow people to gain credentials as adults. So the only currency that we focus on, we've kind of, we traditionally have done training and development opportunities, and we've done graduate credit. This will allow our academic deans to take it and run with it in terms of really expanding their impact on teachers, allow our instructional coaches to expand their impact on our teachers. So this is about growing our people.
And our brightest, yep, and our brightest teachers will also be the subject matter experts to also come in to write part of the courses as well.
Right, but, but your arrow piece, you're actually, the big part of the arrow should be at the bottom. You've got this huge pool of teachers, and you end up with maybe not the huge pool of scholars. So visually, I'm having, that was part of my issue. So Canvas is going to help us do this?
Yes.
Is that, they're going to come in and help us do what? Develop the classes specifically?
It gives us, it is the tool. Kim, actually, is, is, her background is designing, like, graduate-level courses. She actually designs them. So what happens is, this is the tool she has to have to put it online, take what everybody has given her for information, and put it into a tool that then people can access and actually work through the process. So I know...
And Kim is what? What is her job description?
Kim is the director, she is the Director of Instructional Design. She was hired specifically for designing professional development.
And then this can be done, so you're talking about the mobile app, so a lot of this is all, I mean, there's not...
It can be done...
Sit-down classroom, physical buildings, this is all going to be electronic?
It can be done at any point. They want to do it at 1:00 in the morning, they can complete a unit at 1:00 in the morning. They could have their book or their articles that they're to read, for instance, around a unit of study. They can have the article right then and there, they download it, they read it, there are quizzes, assessments that are built into that. It's all online. There could be, again, components where at a certain unit, it'll say, you will have a face-to-face training that will complement this area of instruction, starting, look for it in April coming up. You know what I mean? And so they'll know what training to look for that they need to take.
And so the crossover or with, with our textbooks is what?
That is if, that is about the classroom instruction that happens with students. So the resources, remember I just mentioned that you could download articles for adult learning? What you can do is utilize the textbooks, the materials there, and then upload it into the system so that it's all right there digitally, so a child can go home and not have to bring their textbook. They might have access to it digitally.
So that's not about the adult learner?
That is not about the adult learning. That's about the teacher portion.
And then the coordination or collaboration with others around us, if Harlem decides to do it, but we know Belvedere does, is what? We're going to share coursework? We're going to, I mean, what, or our, people can move to there and say I...
I'll give you an example.
Such, but what's, why is that important?
So, let's give new teacher the new course that's going to be created here, starting in August, for new teachers. It's going to be around systems of success, and it's going to be built around their evaluation and Danielson. We'll have an aligned course for mentors, their mentor to take at the same time they're taking. There's an opportunity for activities for them to be collaborative in their activity. So if they're doing this, let's say, you know, I can't meet with you face-to-face mentor, so I have to go home tonight. You know what? I'm going to go online with you. There's capabilities where the two can instant message one another on reflecting back and forth and collaborating around activities that are designed for the two. That's the collaboration portion that...
Because they're mentors in another district.
They're mentors here.
The other district piece is that some people are ahead of us, and so we can ask questions about their implementation, some of their hurdles, structures, things that they've gone through.
Right.
So we've used Belvedere right now because they've used Canvas in the classroom. So we toured and spoke with their IT director in terms of implementation time, complexity, maintenance. So we wanted to make sure that we were touching bases with other districts that have gone through this process, because in the past, sometimes we have forgotten about what it takes to upkeep software when we buy it, and what is, what is it going to take? And so we were very thoughtful in terms of having Chris Taski go with, ask those questions. So having it regional really helps with college and career in terms of our students going to RVC or Rockford University and using that same system. But mentioning the K-12 districts, it just helps us have partners in terms of, how are you utilizing it? What parts of tools have been most helpful in terms of that collaboration?
And when students transfer, sometimes they transfer, we know we get kids coming from other districts, they'll be working on a platform they're already familiar with.
But this year, we're not even talking about doing students, so...
We are not.
This is all about the adult piece. It's 85,000 is about the adult piece. Whatever you bring to us recurring next year may or may not have that. And how long would it take Kim to get all her classes in place so that they can actually start using it? And then I'll let my other board members step up. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to monopolize.
Okay, so, those are two questions. We didn't want to forget, if we wanted, if we want to pick a purchase for a three-year period, and we know that the curriculum side would like to implement it in the classroom, we wanted to make sure that teachers were a part of the process. That is why I'm just speaking about that tonight. We're not ready for that yet, but it does impact which vendor we would choose. That's why we got teachers involved. Okay? So the second question, the second question you had is about timelines. So for instance, Kim, on her trajectory, when she and I plan together, we have actually one course for new teachers that we need to get in the system right away, where she already has some teachers that are working on that currently. We have a course for teacher leaders with mentors that we're working on currently. We also have a course that we're working in collaboration with teacher, teacher leader and principal, that would be a course, and possibly two courses for principals around strategic planning, mission vision, and some Danielson pieces. So right now, if we get an LMS, we could potentially have five courses ready to go in the fall or by winter. So, and there are still ones that we are ready to go and implement in winter, spring, and summer. So we have a trajectory to move, but we cannot move anywhere until we, until we purchase a tool to get us there.
Mr. Escobedo.
I think, I guess part of my question was maybe just answered. So this is, this is really the database, it's really a database tool that helps manage your learning, but my question was going to be around creating the content and the effort it's going to take to create and manage that content, update that content as we go. And if this is the way we're going to go forward, I guess I just want to make sure that there's just not another activity that is going to distract us from the main objective.
I think it would only give you a return on investment for the teachers and for student growth. The better they are at their craft, and the more, the better they understand what it is they need to do in all areas, the better results we're going to have with students as well.
In the effort to create, manage, update that content, I mean, I guess it's something we're kind of already doing, is that...
That's correct.
Is that...
I mean, Kim's already started this and has been working on this since fall. Again, this is what she has done for post-secondary institutions. She does it all the time. It's not something that's new to her. She actually understands exactly how to, how to get it done, and as long as she has the, what we call the subject matter experts that we can bring in, and we are considering what compensation looks like for those individuals, then she'll be ready to rock and roll quickly as long as she has an LMS.
And Mr. Escobedo, to help answer that question, the maintenance around created classes is much less when you have an LMS, because as content changes, you can go in and tweak and make adjustments. At this point right now, we recreate the wheel every time we offer a PD. If something changes, we start from scratch and build the whole PD session again. This is that database where we'll be allowed to go in and fine-tune year by year, depending on how practices change, what the need is. So the maintenance in terms of the PD offerings allows us to be a much more efficient process.
Very similar to what a teacher does in the classroom with students throughout the year, scaffolding their instruction. We don't do that systematically in our district, and that is what Matt's talking about tonight.
Okay, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Dixon.
So from my understanding, this is just for teachers that want to better themselves. Are we ever going to, is this going to be a mandate that we're going to? I have several questions, but one is, is this going to be, are we going to mandate teachers to take this program?
We, we are for new teachers. They'll have a four-year track.
Okay.
And, yeah.
And then if we, I guess, my question is, if we, is this, is this going towards something that's going to be accredited to a degree? Because if I have a choice between this and a degree, I'm going to take the degree because I know I'm going to get paid, but this, I don't know if I'm going to, it's about, I'm not saying it's about money, but it is about money. So if I could, if I can get a degree or my master's in something that's going to, I know for sure I'm going to get a degree, then I'm, I prefer to do that. So that's the problem I'm running into.
So I might defer that one to Dr. Jarrett, because that is some things that they talked about during bargaining.
Yeah, so the currency will be in graduate credit. So these will translate to district-provided credits. So people will still get, be able to get master's degrees from outside providers. We aren't going to offer master's degrees through this, at least, but we will certainly offer master's degree credit. So we will be able to offer RPS credit. So the new teacher pathway is a great example of that. When students have, when our new teachers have finished their first four years of teaching, they will have, through the LMS, completed 10 graduate credits, and they will move one to the right on the salary schedule without having to pay a dime for it. So the value is, it's offered internally, it's offered customized for what we do here in RPS, and you don't have to pay to get the credit. And we keep track of it in the same system that we offer it.
Right, but it doesn't transfer if I go somewhere else.
That's right.
That's a retention tool.
Which we think is a good thing.
No, no, I get that. But far as a individual, I'd be like, if I have the choice, then I'm going to go with master, because I travel everywhere I want, everywhere I go. And I get it, I get it, you know?
But they have to pay 30,000 to 40,000, whereas here, they could, and again, virtually all teachers will eventually get at least one master's degree, but this would allow them, between the new, the new teacher onboarding, the max in our current pay scale is master's plus 40. You could certainly see teachers getting a master's and then doing all 40 hours on things that really apply to their craft here in RPS. You will absolutely have people that would rather spend the money so their credentials are more portable, but we do have a high number of teachers that, once they get past that master's degree, don't move around a lot anymore, and then it's valuable.
And we also, and we also have teachers that are probably the first, maybe 10 years of their career, they can't afford to go back to school, and so this gives them a leverage to be able to move themselves on the salary scale free of charge, technically.
Yeah, right.
And then they have a larger salary, then they can go ahead and consider some post-secondary master's programs after that. But having been in that myself, and you want to take it when you're younger, sometimes you just don't have the cash flow to do that.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to ask a question. I think Mr. Zetaker is probably the best person to answer this, because in my previous career in a large healthcare organization, we had an LMS system, and we used it for mandatory training, things like cultural diversity, infection control, safety of our buildings, all those kinds of things. I'm thinking that there's got to be a way that we could do that here. If you wanted to roll out a cultural diversity equity thing, you could have the basics in a class online and do that. Or if you wanted to do something with Fred on controlling access to buildings and school safety or whatever...
And we could tape Fred giving the instructions, and people would have to watch it and respond to it, and it would be great.
There you go, so...
Yes.
Actually, we've talked, we've talked to Lori Hoadley about that as well, taking all the mandated training for all the bargaining units that she does, and actually put it into an LMS so that she can track, we can track exactly that people are actually taking the mandated training, that we're not missing anybody.
We could do a class on fundraiser and management of money.
Michelle's all over that.
But, I mean, I mean, it's a tool that could be used for any of those kinds of...
Unlimited possibilities for it, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any others? We will vote on this on July 10th, which is our next board meeting, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Any other business for the good of the cause? Couple reminders, remember, board members, you have evaluations that you have to get done and get to me. Deadline is Sunday. And also a reminder, again, that our first committee, the whole meeting, is 5:30 on July 17th. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye. No one's opposed, I'm sure. We are adjourned at 9:22.
All right.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I think you spoke for...
How are you, dear?